Could be recording now. So with that, I will launch into presentation, which hopefully I'll be able to share with you soon. My screens just got all thrown around, but should be what needs to happen here. Yeah, so um, thank you for being here tonight and and welcome. As I mentioned, my name is Liz Moore, I'm the senior planner and tonight, this is the first open house, the the online open house for the Christina Lake OCP review bylaw number eighteen fifty-five. And with us here today are Donna and Grace, as I mentioned, and I'm there we go, trying to get the screen to advance. So I'm hoping that this presentation will take about ten minutes. Um, we this is just a kind of a brief outline of some of the slides we have. Overview of today, what we'll talk about, what is an official community plan? What is in an OCP? What was what the OCP review process was at Christina Lake? Policies, development permit areas that are in the plan still and if you are wishing to submit comments, I have a slide there just with how you might want to do that and following the presentation. I will we will, I will open the floor for question and answer period, which will take us to seven. Um, I'll ask you to save your questions until the end of the presentation. Um, and that if you can raise your hand using the button at the top of the of the screen. The little raise hand symbol. Or you can enter in questions in the in the Q and A button up there too, and we'll be monitoring those. We will, yeah, we will need to actually, if you, so we will need to actually actively unmute you in order to to let you speak, so just let us let us get to that before you start making asking your question. Um, I mentioned this in my email to people who sent who registered with with me early throughout the week. Just that we do really want to focus this meeting on by law eighteen fifty-five. Had a couple, a couple of emails with questions surrounding the riparian development permit area, which we have removed from the OCP bylaw and also a number of questions about the floodplain bylaw. And we do want to hear these questions and we do want to hear people's comments about this, but it just for tonight, we are going to keep the focus on by law eighteen fifty-five because the public hearing is next week and that public hearing will be very focused on that bylaw. So by law eighteen fifty-five is the proposed official community plan for Christina Lake. So what is an OCP? What is an official community plan? So they, OCPs are meant to describe the long term vision of communities. They are statements of objectives and policies that guide decisions on planning and land use management. It will guide eventually what will end up in the in the zoning bylaw when we go through the review process for that bylaw, which we are planning on starting this year. And then also it has the power of requiring all future bylaws that are adopted by the RDKB, they they must be consistent with the official community plan. So if there's there's policies in there that guide certain things, then that that gets that influences other bylaws at the RDKB. It's a, it's a very, it's a, it's a legislated document. We get a lot of guidance from the province about what to include. There's, so there's eight, eight main required elements. We need to plan for residential development to meet anticipated housing needs for at least the next five years. We need to show where present and proposed commercial, industrial, institutional agriculture, agricultural, recreational and public utility land uses are or will be. We need to show present and propose public facilities, including schools, parks and waste treatment and disposal sites. There are some, so these are the other requirements, so we need to show where sand and gravel deposits that are suitable for for extraction are in the in the the plan area, any phasings of major roads, sewer water systems that are planned to go forward. We need to restrict land use in areas of hazardous conditions or environmentally sensitive areas. Restrict, like with restrictions being to development in those areas. Uh, we need to provide housing policies for affordable housing, rental housing and special needs housing. And then we also need to provide targets for the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and policies and actions that the local government will take to meet those. There's also a number of optional policies that the the Local Government Act, the legislation that guides this process suggests that we, you know, it's, we might want to include some of those are policies relating to the social needs of the community, social development, social well-being. Let how policies relating to land for agricultural use and how we can protect that and and enhance that. Preservation, protection, restoration and enhancement of the natural environment, its ecosystems and biological diversity. And for there's a number of jurisdictions that the local government does not have influence on. You may be aware of some of these, but they include, you know, roads, education. There's a lot of them, boat traffic on the lake. So what we can do in the OCP is we can make broad statements or broad objectives within the policies to to say what the our local government wants to see or what our area wants to see for for those subject matters. And then, of course, OCPs are often where development permits, permit areas are designated so that and they show up on the map as areas where certain guidelines must be followed. So what is in this OCP? This is a pretty haphazard way of putting it out there, but there there is a much more orderly way in the table of contents at the front of the of the bylaw itself. Within this spread, you'll see a lot of those required content. The required content that I just mentioned, but also there's, there's our guiding principles, which set out kind of the the vision and the guiding the guiding policies that influence the the development of the whole plan. There's also policies on the heritage and cultural resources at Christina Lake. There's we included some of the the optional policies around agricultural resources and how to protect agricultural land at Christina Lake and also some of the development permit areas at Christina Lake. The process to develop this OCP and to to go to review the the former one, which was adopted in two thousand and four, it's been a really lengthy process. It started in twenty eighteen with the formation of the steering committee and through, you know, pandemic, staff changes and a number of, a number of different situations, there have been some delays throughout the process. And so we are in, we are in the final stages of this process right now with the public hearing. Yeah, so this is a you know, throughout that entire span of time, we've had multiple engagements with the with the with the broader community, but we've also had a steering committee that was formed right at the beginning that carried on through until our final meeting in twenty twenty-three. And the steering committee is made up of a number of local residents drawn from the Advisory Planning Commission, business owners, parks and rec committee people, waterfront property owners and everything in between. So as I was mentioning, the steering committee was with this process the whole way. So over five years of meetings, there were, there were twenty meetings. And we, they were a key part of this process through looking at all of the old policies in the in the current OCP. We discussed them as a group. Myself and and other and previous planners before me proposed new policies to be included and they were discussed and edited with the steering committee. And then brought to the broader community through four different open houses that happened over the years. Where we would share the information that we are using, including survey results that came from the twenty eighteen survey. And then also asking questions to gain input on specific topics that the the steering committee wanted more information from the public before they said, you know, we should really do policies this way. So with all these policies laid out in this document, what do they, what do they do? They give direction to our board of directors and and to staff as well to how on what they should be considering when making decisions about land use decisions. And then they also outline certain areas of of interest that we want to communicate to the province either through when we receive a referral from provincial agencies on things such as roads or subdivisions or forestry. Or in some cases, what we might want to, or our board of directors might want to advocate for to those senior levels of government, the provincial and federal government for something along lines of regulating boat traffic, for instance. Also, these, these policies that laid out are going to guide what happens in the zoning bylaw review. Because what happened with the zoning bylaw needs to be consistent with the OCP. So this is a, this is laying the laying the groundwork for what's going to come in the regulations at a later point. So land use designations that are in the OCP, they will likely translate into what the what the zoning will be. And then development permit areas, that's another key component of the OCP. As I mentioned before, designated in the official community plan. There are areas where a permit needs to be applied for and you need to demonstrate how you're going to follow certain guidelines which are outlined in the OCP. The three development permit areas that are going forward with this OCP. They're not really changing that much from what was in the the current or what was, yeah, what is in the current OCP that was adopted in two thousand and four. We are going from a number of six different development permit areas down to a number of three. So the the three that are listed there are the are the three that are, the the three that are in the current OCP or the proposed OCP. And the main difference is there's been an industrial permit area, a development permit area, which is the Ponderosa Industrial Development Permit Area, that is no longer being included in the bylaw as that parcel is no longer in the industrial land use designation. And also the three commercial development permit areas have been combined into one. Because they were, they were all attempting to accomplish the same thing, so we're just trying to simplify the bylaw. Okay, so all of that is to give a brief overview and there's a lot more detail in this document that I'm I'm hoping that you will, you'll take a close look at or have taken close look at. And so if you have comments that you do want to have read out at the public hearing and you are not, if you are not able to attend in person, you can send those to that email address, plandepth@rdkb.com. We'll want to receive them by two PM on March twenty-sixth, which is the day of the public hearing. So that we can make sure that I have them in my hand and and we can, we can read them out at the public hearing. Of course, if you're able to be attend in person, you will be given an opportunity to speak while at the public hearing before it closes. Oh, and I'll just mention, if you do want this email address sent to you after this meeting so that you make sure that you have it, feel free to reach out to me and I will forward it to you. Okay, so thank you for your attention on that. I will stop sharing my screen and we will look to you for any questions you might have.
I'm not seeing any raised hands. Oh, there are.
There's a couple.
Happening, that's happening, okay. So Jeff Harold. I will allow the mic for Jeff Harold.
So you might need to unmute yourself though, Jeff, to to actually speak.
I think that's what, when I let Grace do that, so I you know, that your mic should be enabled right now, Jeff.
Sorry, I couldn't find them. I couldn't find the mic button.
Perfect, yeah, that's great.
Thanks. Thanks, Liz, for setting this up so that we could all participate. We really appreciate that. I got just a a couple of questions on section twenty-one. And just for clarification, I think I'm reading it right, but I just wanted to get a confirmation from you. In twenty-one point five, it looks like if someone was expanding an existing building by more than twenty square meters, they would need a DP, but not if their existing disposal system is more than a hundred meters away from the boundary. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Right, so if your existing is more than a hundred meters away, you can expand three hundred, four hundred, five hundred square meters, whatever you you can, you'd need a building permit, of course.
Yeah.
But not a development.
Not a development permit, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that's the way I read it. I just wanted to make sure that was the case. And then also in twenty-one point six, point two, if you look at B and E and then in point three, A, B and C, they're all quite related to riparian climate change, environmental, that was part of the you know, the riparian area stuff in section in section, former section twenty-two. But they don't really fall into any of the guidelines above. So I'm trying to understand there seems to still be some effort to capture some, some riparian type stuff, but without a guideline above it, because the guideline appears to be all septic related, which I'm fully supportive. I I think that's the biggest concern that a lot of us have is making sure that all the septic systems around the lake are up to scratch and I applaud what you're doing to strengthen that. So could you, I'll, I'll stop talking and
Yeah, sorry, could you say those those letters again? I heard I've got B and
It was twenty-one point six point two.
Yeah.
B and B and E.
B and E.
And then twenty-one point six three, A, B and C. And they all seem to be related to climate destruction of vegetation, things like that, that might be associated with somebody doing a you know, a two hundred foot expansion. I understand if they're expanding more bedrooms, then you know, we need to see how they're dealing with the sewage. But it, but it appears it's still a little bit related to riparian type protection that it it says you have to follow the guidelines before that in twenty-one point. I'll have to go back and look here at my document. Twenty-one point six, the guidelines, but all the guidelines are around septic, if I can, if I am not mistaken.
When you say the guidelines, you mean it kind of the justification for for why the development permit area is there?
Yeah, so twenty-one point six, the application must include a report meeting all of the the A through F guidelines. And then in point two, a development permit may be issued based on adherence to the above guidelines, none of which are related to climate or riparian protection, yet some of the the following stuff is related to that. So I'm kind of wondering if some of that was included, you know, when you had the section twenty-two and it was sort of all encompassing, now that twenty-two is gone, one wonders how that's that applies, especially when there's no guideline for it.
Yeah, so um, so some of these, and I I'm just, I've been scanning them just as you, as you've been describing them. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Donna.
Well, I was just gonna say I could read them out if you want. I've got them in front of me, but if you're looking at them anyway, that's good.
Yeah, so that, so for instance, twenty-two, twenty-one point six point two B demonstrate that the unique characteristics of parcels have been, has have been considered as well as the nature of the existing or proposed development include a description of the existing vegetation and any proposed vegetation removal. So part of that was was something that was required in the in the, in the, well, the current DP, just those site of site characteristics, the part about the existing vegetation and proposed vegetation removal. So there are benefits to having vegetation on a parcel when looking at the filtration of of septic effluent coming from a septic bed towards the lake. There's, there's a capturing that happens of nutrients. There's also the kind of a screening effect that that can happen for any like pathogens and whatnot. It holds, it holds these elements in the soil longer so that the soil can break them down. So that's kind of how that ties in, yeah.
And Liz, if if it was in the predecessor, then I, I'm not concerned, right? I I was just wondering if if we've expanded rather than just renamed, like I I kind of understood that what we were doing is renaming the predecessor waterfront area and adding more strength to the septic. So if all that stuff was there before, and I do understand, I guess, I mean, we're hoping that the septic discharge is well below the the plant, right? Like I'm I'm hoping that that it's it's not kind of surface runoff along that and and there was other, but as long as those guidelines were there before, it seems nobody would want to pull back on that.
And I'll, I'll be clear, like a part, so that part of that guideline was there before. It didn't really speak to vegetation before. So we were just kind of expanding on that, on that site consideration aspect so that we can capture some of that I that idea around kind of how much, how much vegetation is going to be interacting with this effluent, so. Climate change part, you know, we're, we are considering climate change effects and and everything that we do, it's it's part of our our mandate. So this is, you know, for certainly for septic fields, depending on its potential location, if there's if it's going to be anywhere within an area that could flood, that's something that we want to be, we want to be considered as part of this process.
Yeah, I get, I get the flooding, like flooding can impact a septic system and that kind of stuff, so I understand that. I just hope that people, when they're coming through and looking at DPs, they're going to be sensible about stuff and make sure that it's we'll save the riparian stuff for the next round when we get the chance to have a lot of discussion around riparian, right? So, yeah, okay.
Okay, yep.
All right, the next question is from Jerry and Paula, and I have allowed you to unmute yourself.
Jerry and Paula, can you see the the mic button up at the top of the the screen? I think that's where you need to unmute only. I actually don't know. Is it up at the top? Yeah, okay, perfect.
Hi, hi, this is Paula and Jerry. We have a play. Hi, David, by the way. See David there. Um, we have a place on Alpine and I just had a couple of questions about the nineteen point two waterfront residential. I know these OCPs don't get written, they get written like every fifteen years or something, so I just don't know what the, how clear and concise you want the language on it. So when where it says that waterfront residential is characterized by smaller lots serviced by septic systems and individual water systems, such as well as their water lines from the lake. Our little neighborhood has a association, right, a well association, which I don't know if that would be considered part under that characterization. And I just wonder if it maybe should be more specified, maybe does the OCP, is that a good thing? Like, would we like to see more people getting, you know, in neighborhoods, getting on these community little well things rather than having individual wells or or taking water out of the lake? I don't know if that's important or not, but I just didn't feel like our property was characterized in that description. So I don't know, I'll let you guys think about that and then, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, I just, I was just checking the map and I was like, oh, yeah, Alpine is waterfront residential. I didn't, don't think I'd realize that, so.
So we, I think, is Jerry, is that like a hundred and some sixty families or something on this water system? So it's not individual wells on our property.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's a good point.
That might be something, if other neighborhoods saw that, they might think, oh, we should get one of those too. I don't know. And then the second thing was, I'm just wondering when the last time any of you guys went up to the north end of the lake? Because were you right that the north end, generally these parcels have remained less developed? I mean, have you guys seen what's up there now? I mean, they're mega mansions. They're like, there's huge houses up there that you just go, whoa, how did this ever get? You know, all the work it would have taken to build it and everything, so I'm not sure, from my point of view anyways, that's a good description of what's happening at the north end of the lake. Although I don't know if that would change any bylaws or rules or anything, but if we want to get a really good concise description of what what's happening at our lake, maybe that language needs to be changed a bit.
Okay, that's, that's a valid, that's a valuable comment. I I was up there last year, but I, so yeah, I'm curious about which properties. I'm guessing these are these are the, like, they're they're boat access only properties, I'm imagining of it, like, yeah.
Yeah, some of them are probably five thousand square feet. I mean, they're huge, so, yeah, there's a lot of houses up there.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next person that I see has a question is Deb three, and I have enabled Deb to un unmute her mic as well.
And I I've unmuted. I'm on my phone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're, you're quiet, but I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, I'll hold it. Maybe I'll just take the speaker. There we go.
That sounds good.
Right, so I'm, I'm going to ask a couple of questions that are really basic to the OCB process because I'm kind of new, I'm late in the game here. And so it, the last one was twenty years ago. From what I understand, the new mandate is to have them now done every five years going forward. That's, you know, that's the ideal from what I gather from the provincial government.
Sorry, Deb, just to interrupt, that has been specified for municipalities. The province recognizes that most regional districts just do not have the capacity to to follow through on that, so, yeah.
Right, given that this, this has now been in the works, did you say since two thousand and eighteen?
And we also have eight OCPs. Or maybe, is it nine now? I think it's nine now, yeah, so it's, yeah, exactly. Normally, our processes aren't quite this long. There have been some, some extenuating circumstances on this one, so.
Yeah, and so another aspect to that.
Yep.
Land available for new housing, and so we haven't run out of land either at Christina Lake for that subdivisible and and that new houses can be developed. So so that's the criteria that we work to as the regional district.
Oh, right, okay, so now, when this process started in two thousand and eighteen, obviously, the, so the recent legislation that has come from the government, from the beat, from the provincial government, like the the new housing densification, the Emergency Disaster Management Act, the Land Amendment Act that they pulled back on. So particularly, let's, if I just refer to that, the housing densification, for lack of a better word, I don't know what the what the actual name of it is. But, and it doesn't apply to Christina, but I just wanted to to point out that that legislation applies to any municipality, so it applies to Grand Forks, I believe, but that has five thousand or more. And what, from what I understand, now, I'm not, I could be off off base here, is that the legislation goes directly to the OCP and sort of bypasses all the hearings that might be involved normally. So from what I understand, and maybe Grace can clarify, is that if it's in your OCP and then there's provincial legislation that says any OCP that contains this language, you know, this is going to happen. Has that, it, one, is that, is that an accurate? Has that, it, one, is that, is that an accurate portrayal of what is possible first, before I go any further?
I think that's a Donna question, because there is some, you're saying bypass pu- uh, public hearing, or is that what you're referring to?
I sort of am, like, I mean, who would have thought?
There's an ad in the, in the paper, and it's coming from City of Grand Forks. And it makes that statement in there, because you have a choice at a certain point in time. Donna, I think that you probably understand this process better than any of us.
Yeah, so with the, so the, the legislation is requiring that we make amendments to our zoning bylaws by June of this year. I believe that's the date. And, um, and that has to allow for that densification. But you have to keep in mind that for places like Christina Lake, where we don't have, um, we have some community water, we don't have community sewer. So it's still going to have to meet those health criteria or those servicing criteria for those parcels. Many of the, the locations, um, like it's certainly in the residential one designation, residential one zone, they already allow for the secondary suite, so that densification is already permitted at the lake.
Right, so I, I know it doesn't apply to Christina, uh, the, the legislation directly, which will come into force on June 30th, whether or not you have adopted it or not, from what I understand. Is, you don't really need to even make any changes, it just comes into force whether you like it or not. Meaning the municipalities that have over 5,000. And I know it doesn't apply to us, like, to, to the Area C. So this OCP right now just stands alone all by itself, and what it says is what it says. But is there, is there any, um, uh, argument or, you know, second thought about looking at it again with the view to, you know, how any of those provisions might be effective from provincial legislation that takes away any of the avenue for public hearing? I'm, I'm not explaining it really very well, because I'm assuming that in the OCP, which then affects zoning, that there will be public hearings for, for certain things. Is that right?
So I, I think, I think what you're, you're referring to is that the idea that if, if the amendment, they say it's a zoning amendment, is consistent with this OCP, then we are, we are not allowed by the province to hold a public hearing. We will, we will notify, um, we will put notices out to the public so that they know that, uh, it's been, it's been, it's been applied for and, and you'll get it, you will see that. And Donna, I, I'm looking to you.
It's that first reading, so it's, so what it does is that notification says that the board will be giving first reading to a bylaw, and it'll describe what that bylaw is doing, but it will be, the, the public hearing will be waived. We won't be holding public hearings, as long as it's consistent.
Are people able to come to the board hearing to make comments?
They are.
Sorry, the board meeting, I should say.
Yes, yes, so they can make comments. Similar to when we have a development variance permit before the board, then members of the public can make comments at that, at that meeting.
Or submit letters too, yeah.
Or submit letters, yes.
Donna, does, does that apply to Area C? Like, I, I can see why it would apply to Grand Forks, but Area C being less than 5,000 and not a municipality. Why, where, where did the, hmm, bypassing, for lack of a better word, of public hearings? How, how does that affect rural, rural areas, electoral areas?
Yeah, yeah, so the province is trying to, well, as you all know, they're trying to speed up the densification and increase of housing. They don't want anything to slow it down. They don't want local government to slow it down.
I know that, but how does it apply to electoral areas? Like, my understanding is that it applies on June 30th to all municipalities of 5,000 or more, right? So that lets out electoral areas. So, I, and I brought it up only because, one, I just assumed it wouldn't apply to Area C at all, ever, at this point in time. So I guess that needs clarification. But the other thing is, what I'm trying to get at, is there anything in this draft OCP that could back, come back to bite us? Like, let's say you've included something that sounds really great, oh, let's look after, you know, this X. And then the government, the provincial government passes something and says, oh, if you have that in your OCP, those changes can be made without a public hearing. If you're, if I'm, I, I really don't think I'm explaining that very well, but.
Yeah, and, and you know, there's, um, there were four different bills that were introduced at the same time. And I think what would be useful, we do have a, a really good staff report that was sent to our Electoral Area Services Committee, and we can send a link out to that, and that describes each of those. And so, because what I just pulled up on my phone right now is that, um, we have to permit the secondary, one secondary suite or one accessory dwelling unit, and it's the municipalities that have to allow three or more. So it's higher density in a municipality where they have those services. So that's what I'm seeing, just in a quick Google search here. So there's a, a lot of things that were imposed on local governments and really short order without any consultation. But I would be happy to send that link out, and Elizabeth, yeah, she, she has everyone's email address, and that, um, that report lays it out really well, because I, I think that there, you might be mixing two different things together in your question, but I'm not positive.
I am, I'm sort of am, but I, I'm really trying to, um, visualize or explain a ca- just a cautionary tale. About, make, about the current changes that you're making in the OCP. Are any of them going to come back and bite Area C with it, with its good intentions? And, 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 you know, look what, so who would have ever thought that the provincial government could mandate and take away public hearings on municipalities? It's like, why do you even have a council? If you, if, if the provincial government can just override, uh, just come in and just lay out what yours, what the, what the municipal zoning is going to be. So anyway, I'll put that aside, um, because I, uh, kind of over explained it. But my other question is, you, when you talk about the OCP, you say guidance. Now, uh, is it guidance or is it rules?
Um, so there's a bit of a mixture. The majority of the OCP is guidance. So that's kind of where the, the policy level comes in, is policy tends to be saying, this is, this is the direction we want to take. These are bylaws we want to pursue. These are, you know, this is kind of the, the vision for, for the community. This is how, how we considered these, these things through the process of the, the OCP. Then you get to a part such as, um, such as like a development permit area where, uh, there, if you, if you have a property within a development permit area and you are pursuing a development that would trigger that, that, uh, that, the need for a development permit, then you are required to follow the guidelines in order to, um, be issued a permit. So that's kind of where requirements might come in. Yeah, and then there's also that you, I mean, kind of what you were saying with your concerns around the lack of public hearings for zoning bylaws, that consistency question does come in. So what's laid out, so we've got that, that section at the, what is it? It's section 19 and all of those land use designations that fall under that. That really outlines a lot of what will be translated into zones in the zoning bylaw. So that, the, the zoning bylaw needs to be consistent with the official community plan. So that means that it needs to, if, if there's something in here that's really directive and says that needs to be included in the zoning bylaw, that might be a requirement. The, the way that we've worded it was intentionally a little more open while still giving guidance for how we want the zoning bylaw to go. It's, uh, it's, it's worthwhile to have that, that, things to be a little bit more open in your, uh, in your OCP, because it can cause problems down, down the road when you want, want to allow people to have variances to things on their property. If you're really specific about it in the OCP, it prevents people from having variances, just as an example. So, um, yeah, I don't know if that helped clarify for you at all, kind of that, that difference, but, yeah. And I, I just, a comment on your, kind of your concerns around the removal of the public hearings, um, for zoning bylaws. That doesn't apply to, to official community plan amendments. So if down the road, we do see, oh, this is problematic in this OCP, this is sending us down the garden path, we can amend the official community plan. Um, either someone from the public can apply to amend the OCP. It's, it's an application that we have through, uh, the planning department, or the regional district can bring it forward and say, like, we see this as a problem, and we will be required to hold a public hearing for any of those. So that's, that is where public hearings still do exist in their kind of traditional format, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
So I'm going to go to, so Kate, K-A-T-E, would be the next person. And I noticed some people still have their hands up. I don't know if you want us to come back, if you still have a question. But, uh, let me know. So I'm allowing the mic for Kate right now.
Uh, good evening and thank you very much. So my question is, in, in really around, um, some of the, um, designations. And so knowing the characteristics of Christina Lake, there are a significant number of properties that are only allowed and legislated, or their bylaws are written so that they're only allowed to be open certain number of months a year. They're actually seasonal. And I don't see anything in the OCP that talks to or addresses that type of environment at Christina Lake. It's assuming that everybody is full-time permanent residency. And I think that that's not truly representation, uh, true representation of, um, the utilization of Christina Lake. So i- is there an opening or a aspect of that seasonal piece that needs to be thought through as part of the OCP?
So those are certainly in the zoning bylaw. There are seasonal use for some of those, um, kind of higher density campgrounds, the seasonal campgrounds. But the language, yeah, I'm not sure.
So there will be.
Liz, Liz is looking at.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, so most of those, most of the properties that I'm thinking about are kind of the, uh, you know, the, the seasonal resorts. For the most part, they are in the, uh, desig- like the waterfront commercial designation. And it, you know, you make a good point, it might, it might not. It, it mentions resort businesses, uh, border, bordering on the foreshore of Christina Lake, but it, you know, it doesn't really speak to that, that seasonal aspect. Certainly, if you see, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I think that the, that there's a, um, it, it talks to it being a commercial business, but not all of those seasonal places are businesses. They're actually owner, like, they're actually owned by individuals that are representation, that are represented by a board of directors and have their own, um, sets of, of, uh, rules, regulations and bylaws that, um, are strictly, you know, that, that it's only allowed to be used this many days or months of the year. And, um, it's not a commercial enterprise.
And so the, the people who, who, uh, because I, um, I'm thinking of, um, Christina Lakeside Resort right now. I feel, I, I think I'm getting the name right. And I think maybe you are even a representative from there. But it's, yeah, so i- in those circumstances, do many of those properties get rented out as kind of more, more cat, like rental cabins? Because I think that's how they've been characterized to us before. But if it's really kind of cabins that are, people are going to for a couple weeks a year or whatever, or, or for the whole summer months. I, yeah, I guess maybe a little more clarity for me on that would be, would be good too.
So what would be the clarity that you would need, Liz?
I guess just around, um, uh, is it, are they, are they primarily rental properties? Or are they, are they, they aren't? Okay, so, okay, okay.
They're owned.
They're owned.
So that's, that's an interesting point.
And in those cases where you have your board of directors and your own individual rules for those properties, those supersede anyway, those, those would be the most applicable things. We're not enabling anything through this official community plan, um, that, that isn't all, already allowed. Like, you're, yeah, your rules would supersede.
Okay.
Is that your last question, Kate?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm going on to Gail and Lori Hall, and I'm allowing your mic there.
Hi, um, I'm just going to clarify a few things, um, what Kate was talking about. We're, um, part owners of Willow Beach, and we're a limited company. We, um, there's 32 shares and we all own a share. And then we do have like a couple of campsites, and that, so we run it as a business. That side is different. They pay their own taxes, they look after, own their own sites. We don't. We own 1/32 of a hole. So every, so, uh, what, the only reason I am even coming in is I just wanted to clarify that every campsite owned individually is owned different. Like, we're different than both sides of us, so that's all I want. I just want it, because you said something about clarifying.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's helpful. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
So I don't see any more hands up, although Kate, your hand is still up. Do you have another question? Nope, hands down, no. Okay, I, I don't see anymore. And I'm just going to check the, the Q and A, just to be sure there isn't something in there. Nope. And there's nothing in the chat.
Something just popped into the Q and A though.
Let's see.
Yeah, I just saw the, the red light go on.
Oh, okay.
It's not loading.
Oh, it was old. Oh, wait a minute, uh, maybe it's, the newer one is at the top from Richard Presacco. Many of the items in the OCP are still mandating items relative to the riparian area, i.e. 19.7 concrete retaining walls, 19.2.6 retaining walls, concrete. Look, just a second, looks like still many of the items that are going to be implemented with the OCP are superseding the riparian discussion. I think this kind of goes back to that, the first, uh, person that we had asking questions, that was from, uh, Jeff Harold. He's, this, um, Richard is pointing to similar things.
Hmm, yeah, I think Richard's pointing to, um, to some of the policies that are in the, the land use designations. Uh, so.
So 19.6, right, yes.
So the discouraged, so 19.7.7 has discouraged the use of concrete retaining walls in proximity to the lake. Yeah, so I, I guess, uh, just one, one thing that I, I would say about, uh, those statements, because I think 19, 19.2.6, uh, I'd have to look at exactly which one that is. But, um, I guess, uh, I would, it was, it's again, that's, it's that the differentiation between policies and, and regulation. This is, this is giving guidance to how we want to, uh, or based upon information that we've, we've gained, uh, from, yeah, just around, uh, erosive powers of, of water and, um, and just impacts that retaining walls can have on ecosystems. Uh, it's, this is kind of going along those, as direction of saying, we're discouraging it. We're not, we're not banning them, we're just going to discourage them. So it's not a, it's not a regulating statement that will be, uh, be carried through into the, into the zoning bylaw, yeah.
Also, I think that's what we heard from the surveys.
From, uh, the, the original survey? Okay. And I saw a hand go up.
Jeff, Jeff Harold. You are still, yes.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, thanks. Um, just on those, uh, those concrete retaining walls, and I, I did notice that that was a, um, more of a policy or a goal. And I, I did notice that that was a, um, more of a, a policy or a goal. So it's not enshrined in the, in the legislation. So it's, it's something that it's, it's what you feel, you'd like to achieve sometime down the road perhaps. But it's not enshrined. But I do have a bit of a struggle with, um, people saying that retaining walls are causing erosion. Uh, I'm a civil engineer, we've been building retaining walls for centuries to prevent erosion. So let's be clear. If, if you don't want retaining walls, it's probably because of aesthetics. Or it's because, uh, the retaining wall maybe be taking out some vegetation. But please don't say that it's to prevent erosion, because that's incorrect. So that, that's, that's the point I've got on, on retaining walls. And, and please don't say that it impacts, um, water quality. Because, uh, you'll get more erosion from the wave action, the storms, the boats. Uh, even when you're trying to do it with natural vegetation, we have mass wasting all the time. Retaining walls prevent that. So I think we got to be clear that when we say we want to discourage things, we should say why we want to discourage them. And be honest about that. It's aesthetics, it's, it's maybe taking out some landscaping. But it's not, uh, to improve water quality and it's not to improve erosion.
And I, I, I agree with you on the point that it prevents erosion on, on the parcel where the retaining walls are. We've seen multiple instances where a retaining wall will deflect the energy of the water down the shoreline. And erode properties down the, uh, down the way that don't have, that don't have the same protection. So. So that's where, that's where erosion does come in. Yeah.
Perhaps, um, but I, I think we should be clear, uh, not just lump it into, um, statements that, uh, they're, they're causing erosion. I would say by far, there might be certain instances when that might be the case, as you just pointed out. But in general, that's not the case. And people, some people are trying to protect their land from eroding. That's why they put the retaining wall there. So that's my, that's my only comment. Thanks.
Yep, yeah, thank you.
I think, um, we have another, well, Gail and Lori Hall. So Gail and Lori, um, yeah, so are you already unmuted or you're able to unmute?
Yes, we are.
I think I'm unmuted now.
Cause you were already spoke, spoke.
Yeah, just one last question. On your plan for the community, has there been any discussion on the outflow of the lake? Like, cause it's getting full of deadheads and, uh, it's restricting the flow of water. There's not much grade from the lake to the kettle river as it is. And we're Willow Beach people and we, you know, when we got flooded, we got, we had three feet of water around our place. At, at one point there a few years ago, when the, I guess it log jammed at the railroad, uh, the trestle there. But anyway, that outflow is getting more and more built up. And I didn't see anything when I was reading through it real quick there, that, that if there was anything in plan to dredge it, clean it out. Or make it so, you know, when, when we do get high water that we're not so affected by it.
Uh, there isn't anything in the plan that, that speaks to, to clearing that out of, of Christina Creek or, or that the outflow of the lake. No, no, yeah.
Well, it's something that should be considered because everybody at the south end is affected by, by the high water. And it's, it's worse, you know, on a bad snow year. And if we're going to be getting these snow packs like we've had in the last few years, it, it's something that should be looked at, I think.
If I can, you know, some of that is caused by Christina Creek going backward. Um, and that happens when the kettle gets so high that it affects the creek. Um, and there's nothing we can do about that. The creek has been dredged way, 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 a long time ago. Um, after the sawmill pulled out, they dredged it and pulled out the logs that it sunk, et cetera. That is a, a problem for, um, both the navigable waters and feds and the province.
Okay.
And so I would suggest if you have an interest in that, that, um, we, we could find you some names to send some, uh, questions to.
That would be lovely.
If you're interested.
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And mute us.
I don't see anything else, anyone else's hand up, Liz.
Um, okay.
And we are at nine, uh, six, seven o'clock right now.
Yeah, yeah, seven o'clock. Okay.
Chat is, uh, there's nothing in the chat and the Q and A is, as it was a couple minutes ago.
If I could thank all of the people that are on this, um, and, and tell you what a great conversation this has been tonight. Uh, this is the conversation type that we do need to have. And, um, Liz and Donna, I thank you so very much once again for putting your time out to, to, um, manage this and walk through it with everybody. It's so important and it's taking a long time, a lot of work. But we, we've got to get this official community plan done and, and move on to some other things as well. So thanks, everybody for, for being on. I really, really appreciate it. It's been really good for me to listen. And, uh, thank you to Elizabeth and Donna as usual.
Yeah, thank you, Grace. Um, and yeah, and I, I just want to, yeah, again, thank everyone for, for coming here and, and the conversation. It's, it's been, it's been very good. And to encourage you that if you, you do want to, um, have comments read out at the public hearing. Or if you're able to attend in person to, to be there as well, uh, that would be, that'd be fantastic. Um, and if you do want to send written comments that, that we will read out, uh, send them to plandepth@rdkb.com. Um, and we will, they will be included in the, the minutes that go to the board of directors when they're considering the O C P. Yeah, so, uh, look forward to seeing your comments and, uh, thank you very much for being here and have a great night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thanks.